Jody, you can come on.
What's the correction here? I don't see.
You're still staff.
Oh, okay. Week one correction.
You're still staff. You're still staff. You can sit at the big table. Hey, you're gonna make some comments right now. 237?
Yes.
Oh, here it is.
Just box two.
That what we want to do? Yes.
Okay.
Something was wrong.
Would you make a motion into withdraw this 237? She said they removed the placard in the ground. Work on that.
Oh, we need to do that tonight?
She's gonna make some comments.
Stinker.
You stinker.
Which number?
This is the hearing on 237. She's not able to draw it because they took the placard off today. They should have looked up. Yeah, just draw the condemnations.
All ready? Good evening. It is 5:31, so we're gonna call the Otomo City Council into session, and we're gonna start with the Board of Health meeting first tonight. I'd like to remind you to turn your phone to silent or vibrate, and then let's all stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Amanda, would you take the roles, please?
Councilmember Dalby.
Here.
Councilmember Rowe.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Strebe.
Here.
Councilmember Berg.
Here.
Mayor Lozio.
Here.
Approve the minutes for meeting number one on January 2nd, 2018 is presented. Recommendation, approve the minutes.
Move the recommendation as presented. Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Any corrections? Hearing none, take the role.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Request to continue condemnation hearing of 209-211 West Fifth Street to February 6th, 2018. Recommendation, continue condemnation hearing to February 6th, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, take the role.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Item three is on our agenda tonight, and we have Jody Gates, who is with us. Jody, we'll turn this over to you. This is a part of a scheduled public hearing, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. We were originally going to bring to you a condemnation recommendation for 237 South Davis Street this evening, but as of 4 o'clock, the placard had been removed and this property had been released for occupancy. The work had been done on the inside that was required by the building inspector, and the water will be restored tomorrow. The owner was at the Water Works making arrangements this afternoon, so we no longer wish to have the Board of Health consider this property for condemnation.
Okay, this is scheduled as a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to address this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing before we take any action.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Victor and Mark.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Is there a motion to take some action on the structure at 237 South Davis?
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to do away with the condemnation if the House is in order that Jody says it in.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Skip. Any questions for Jody? Hearing none, take the role.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Sorry, Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Is there any other business for the Board of Health? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Health.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Now, let's go ahead and reconvene, and we'll need to take the role again for the regular council meeting scheduled for tonight. So Amanda, would you take the role?
Councilmember Rowe.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Strebe.
Here.
Councilmember Berg.
Here.
Councilmember Dalby.
Here.
Mayor Lozio.
Here.
Items on the consent agenda. Minutes for regular meeting number one on January 2nd and special meeting number two on January 9th, 2018 is presented. Acknowledged December financial report and payment of bills as submitted by the Finance Department. Reappointment of Mark Maringer to the Inspection Board of Review, term to expire January 18th, 2023. Appointment of Dallas Jean Glick to the position of Equipment Operator, landfill effective January 22nd, 2018. Appointment of Jennifer Finley to the full-time position of Communications Specialist for the Otomo Police Department. Resolution number 11, 2018, authorizing Joni Keith and Mary Cook as city representatives to the Iowa Communities Assurance Pool, known as ICAP. Resolution number 17, 2018, approving the contract, bond, and certificate of insurance for the Quiet Zone project. Resolution number 21, 2018, accepting the work as finally complete for the water pollution control facility, affluent diffuser cleaning project. Beer and liquor applications for Otomo Grocery, 1209 East Second Street, all applications pending final inspections.
Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Item C, we need a motion for the approval of the rest of tonight's agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Item D, reports from city officers, boards, commissions. Number one, update on St. Joe property, and I'll just make a couple of comments about that. I've had some inquiry from the media about the status of the St. Joe situation, and all I can report tonight is that the negotiations between the hospital and Blackbird, Inc., is proceeding and progressing. I'm not at liberty to say any more than that, so I just want you to have that update. Things are going well. Item two, I'd like to turn to City Administrator Andy Morris and have him give us an update on the placarded house grant.
Thank you, Mayor. That's the second item you see listed, the update on the placarded house program. As you may recall, the city has applied for certain funds from Legacy Foundation, combining that with monies from the city over a four-year period, I believe it is, putting approximately a million dollars towards the support of tearing down placarded homes. I do want to point out there will be a resolution in front of council at the next meeting, memorializing the grant and hopefully the grant approval as well. Again, that'll be a resolution in front of the council on the 6th of February. I don't want to put Jody Gates on the spot, but if I stated anything incorrectly in terms of the grant, I'm giving the thumbs up. That did look like a thumb, so I'll take it at that. Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you for item number three.
Okay, this evening, we do have with us a guest to give us an update on the Convention and Visitors Bureau, so I'd like to invite Melissa Little, the CEO for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, to the podium and give us an update. So, good evening, Melissa.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for letting me come in tonight and can I give you an update on what we're working on at the CVB? And of course, I don't want you to go away empty-handed, so I do have fun little packets for each of you that you could have afterwards with all the information that I'm gonna share with you. I'm not going to... I did get a 45-minute window, right? Just kidding.
That's why I have a big gavel.
Oh, it's like the Gong Show, right? So, a couple of things. I want to update you on some of the projects that are going on right now with the CVB, and one, which is the most forefront right now, is the hotel feasibility study, and that was the study that's being done to decide if our market can sustain a hotel connected to the Bridgeview Center. That study could be in our hands by the end of this week, if not by Friday, first thing next week. So we'll have that report that we can then bring to you and send the RFPs back out to the developers that are interested in the project. There have been several conventions and meetings that we have not been able to bid on. We've actually bid on them, but they've required an attached or nearby hotel. So if this feasibility comes back positive and we get a developer interested, it will open up a lot more opportunity for us to bid on those types of projects. The other one is the Passenger Airline Service, and you know, the purpose of that project was ease of accessibility to our community for business and travelers. And that project, I'll have more at a later date, but I know we talked about it a lot, and then it's been kind of quiet, so I didn't want you to think we've forgotten about that. There are some grants we're looking at with that project, and so we're waiting to see where we stand with some of that. Gateway signage is still underway. We have our next meeting this coming week, actually Thursday this week, to discuss the design of that gateway signage. A big thing we're doing that's different is the Chicago Travel and Adventure Show in February. We are actually gonna go and set up a booth, and at that show, market to over 20,000 end users or travelers and try to get them to come to Otomo for a getaway. And one of the things we just found out yesterday is Archangel is actually going to participate in that show with us and help promote the airport. So we'll be promoting Amtrak and the airport as a way to get to Otomo to come for a weekend or longer. The other thing we have going on that's new is the Major League Eating World Championship Contest. It is a sanctioned sport for pro-eaters around the world. It is the same organization that does the Coney Island Hot Dog Eating Contest on the 4th of July. As a part of Canteen Alley, and to unveil that alley, we'll do a ribbon cut that day, and then we will have pro-eaters from around the world who will come in and see how many canteens they can eat. We do get three spots to fill with celebrity contestants, so if anybody feels they're up to the challenge... I see Larry kind of thinking about it over here. So that will be on June 2nd. ESPN covers that, so we're hoping for a lot of national press out of that event, and canteen is one of the things that really our community is known for, so we're really gonna promote that and push it. One of the other things that we got to do that's different is, for the first time, we have advertised in a national publication, Food Traveler Magazine. We had the opportunity to do an ad in there, and if anybody wants to take a closer look at this, we have a two-page spread about Otomo. So, we're pretty proud of this. And we did highlight the canteen in it because of the contest. This runs January through March on the newsstands, and we talked about the canteen eating contest, hopefully across the country, to get people to come out, because people do follow those events and will travel for them. So this was a big deal. You can buy it at Barnes &amp; Noble, major grocery store chains. So it was a big deal for us to get something in a national publication. Sorry, I can't see, but I don't have my glasses on. The other thing we're working on is we're taking our visitor's guide and making it digital, so it's called Go Mapping. It's a Go Guide and iMapping. So now, instead of just going to our website and people can just flip through our visitor's guide, they can actually... It's interactive. So it helps them plan trips here. They can click on a hotel, takes them directly to that hotel's reservation site. They can go straight to Bridgeview and buy tickets right from our Go Guide. If they're coming to town for something else, they can actually build an itinerary within that. So two of the things that does is it gives us a bigger digital presence. It allows us to update on the fly instead of a one-year static guide, and then it decreases the number of printed guides that we'll have to do. We'll still do the printed guide, because old folks like me still like the printed something in my hand, but the thing it also lets us do is sell advertising in that digital copy to bring in an additional revenue stream to the CVB. Pages for Pennies is coming up. We'll be doing our hospitality training in June. We're working on some pre-planned bike tours, pre-planned itineraries to make it easy for group tour planners to plan trips to our community. Our commercial is complete, and we will have that playing on a loop at the Chicago Show. Babe Ruth World Series for 2019. They are interested in coming back. I have been in contact with the state about the Sports Authority grant that we got last time. It was about $50,000. So once we find out if there is funding after this legislative session, we will then apply for that grant to help with the Babe Ruth World Series in 2019. Our restaurant guide should be printed anytime, so we'll have that available. We've been working on more community marketing and promotion, and we are... We have started the search for a new executive director. That position was posted last Friday. We've started getting some resumes in. It'll be open for a month. As we get those, attached in the packet that I gave you or that was handed out is a job description for the executive director, in case anybody's looking for a job. It's right there. And then we're also working on a pamphlet for the county to promote some of the lesser-known areas, at least people not from the area, like Horse Thieves Cave and Pioneer Ridge and some of those other gems of the county. So we're working on some things like that as well. Then, on the second page of that packet, I have put together a little spreadsheet, and what that... It goes back to fiscal year 2014 and runs through 2019. And up through 2017, it has actual revenues collected from the hotel motel tax. And then the next column will show you the funds received from... Actual funds received for those years. I know we have a formula, and I don't know that who really understands that formula, but if you just take those numbers and try to get a percentage to look at what kind of funding the CVB is getting out of the hotel motel tax, you can see we're hovering right around that 35%. So we're operating on a budget of about 35% of the hotel motel tax revenue that comes in. That next page is a survey that was done by Iowa Destination Marketing Alliance, and they surveyed all the different CVBs around. And those CVBs... This actual report, if anybody wants the whole thing, I'm happy to send it to you. It's about 30 pages. What I did with it is condensed it, took just the information we're looking at right now, and I looked at communities that were about the same size as Otomo. So about 26,000. I went with a couple that were bigger and a couple that were smaller, just to get a good sample size. And if you go across, it'll tell you, you know, the population and what percentage of their hotel motel tax they are actually getting for their CVB. And there are a couple around 43%, 50%, 60%, and they're all right in between those amounts. And you can see, we're at that 35% level. So, we're one of the lower-funded ones, and then the rest of this report goes on, and it will tell you actual revenue received at that actual dollar amounts. And you know, Otomo is one of the lowest-funded ones with dollar amount also. But what's ironic about that is the other report that I have attached here is the Economic Impact of Travel on Iowa Counties. Again, that's a very large report, which I have if you want it, but I took out the things that were just pertinent to us. And Wapalo County is actually the 17th-largest in tax revenues out of 99 counties of the state of Iowa. So, we're doing a lot with a little. So, just keep that in mind. We're doing a lot right now with a little. We're ranked 17th out of 99 counties. So you can flip through there, and it'll tell you. We actually had over 20... From 2015 to 2016, we actually grew our tax... Local tax revenue by 2.5% through travel. So, and with some of these other projects we're working on and trying to get some destination activities going on in our community, those numbers should continue to grow. So I've attached a copy of my projected budget, which I had sent out today to everyone, so you all have that. And you know, it's still within those same numbers. And we'll be coming back later, as we get to that point, to discuss, because the contract with the CVB and the city is due to be rewritten in June. So we'll be talking about that at that point as well. But these are all the things that we're working on, and if you want these full reports, I'm happy to send them to you. I just didn't know that you all wanted to carry off a 50-page report with you tonight. So, do you have any questions on any of that?
Are there any questions or comments from council?
I just have a comment. I'd like to thank you, Melissa, for the great work that you've done in coming in under difficult circumstances and turning a negative into a positive. These are great projects. When we met, I think we got through most of these before we got calls from our kids' schools about the ice storm. But in particular, you know, 4, 5, and 6, those are really attractive. The Chicago Show, being in front of that many people, and then I really like the fact that Archangel is gonna be there and promoting our airport. And being in a big-time magazine and having an ad spot is also great, and these are some of those new and inventive ideas that we can promote what our community has. And then, you know, who doesn't like to see a Major League Eating Contest here in Otomo? So those are interesting, and thanks for all your hard work on these.
Thank you.
I guess I would also just like to comment on the volume of work that the CVB's doing. You know, we tend to, as a community, take for granted a lot of the positive things that are going on, and we kind of act like we don't deserve some of the things that we have, and we don't deserve to be better. And this just goes to show that we do deserve better, and we are capable of better. And I'm really excited to see the better happen in the next year or two. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments?
Like, no, if I could say anything that hadn't already been said, but again, thank you very much for taking on this role, number one. I know we only have you for a limited amount of time, but we're gonna try to get as much good out of you as we can.
I'm kind of feeling a squeeze.
And obviously, this list... You know, what I noticed about this list, Melissa, is that it isn't just a list of small, little things to put on a piece of paper. These are quality projects. You know, like the hotel feasibility study, taking the lead on that. The Passenger Airline Service is certainly something to follow up on. And then seeing some things and some, you know, events coming back, you know, that speaks a lot for Otomo. So, like Councilmember Rowe says, we can't always... You know, we should strive to do better, and we deserve better. And we aren't a community that, in that sense, doesn't deserve it. We do. So, thank you for your work and look forward to the next few months working with you.
Thanks.
Well said, guys. Thank you, Melissa.
Okay. Okay, unless there's something else. Thank you very much. We'll look for a further update and continued work with you and Bob on the budget.
Thank you.
Okay, Andy, I'd like to bounce this back to you. Number four, the website presentation.
The website presentation, just to follow up from last week, you may recall, we had a presentation from Hill Productions on our website. We have two additional entities lined up, as you will note on the 23rd, a week from this evening. That will be Civic Plus. They will give a presentation. In addition to that, Neopothum Labs will also give a presentation. My hope would be that council then would make a... Well, staff will make a recommendation. Hopefully legislatively, council will make a decision as to which website entity that we would choose to go with. But again, that final meeting in terms of the presentations, based on the three that are in front of you, that'll be in front of you on the 23rd. The very last item, the... Pardon me, Sustainability Plan Presentation. You may recall the contract that the city has with To The Top and Cassandra Halls. She's going to give a presentation of that plan on the 27th of February. That'll be at 5:30 PM. I believe, based on my correspondence with her, there will be an advanced copy of that plan. As soon as I get an advanced copy, I will share that with all of you. But again, this plan, the Sustainability Plan, also has a strategic planning component to it, and two items that I think I would like to see us move on. But again, you should... You get ready for that presentation on the 27th, and if I have advanced copies, I'll share those with the elected officials. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Item E, if there's anyone in the audience that wants to address an item on the agenda, now's the time to do that. Seeing none, we'll move on. Item F.
Bid award and contract award for asbestos removal and demolition of 909 West Street. Recommendation, award the asbestos removal contract to New Horizons in the amount of $8,840, and the demolition contract to Tim Skinner Trucking $8,840 and the demolition contract to Tim Skinner Trucking in the amount of $4,984.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Thank you. Any, Jody, you want to make some comments?
Just a couple of things. We accepted these bids until January 9th. We received four of them. And as you can see, we had two combination bids from two companies and then individual bids from two other companies.
Any questions for Jody? Are you ready to vote? Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
Bay Bruth Lease Agreement. Recommendation: Approve the Bay Bruth Lease Agreement and authorize the mayor to sign.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. We have Parks Director Gene Ratchey. Gene, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Atumwa Bay Bruth Baseball Association has been offered the Bay Bruth World Series for August of 2019. A new lease agreement is required in order for them to secure this event. Their current lease expires on March 31st, 2018. The new Bay Bruth Lease Agreement will begin on April 1st, 2018 and expire on December 31st, 2019. Lease agreements with similar timeframes will be placed on the Parkport Agenda in March of 2018. The 2016 Bay Bruth World Series was a positive event for Atumwa and the Bay Bruth Lease Agreement was approved by the Atumwa Parks Advisory Board at the meeting on January 9th, 2018.
Any questions for Gene? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Thank you, Gene.
Accepting the offer of city bridge funding from Iowa Department of Transportation for Ward Street Bridge and authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of acceptance. Recommendation: Accept the DOT offer of funding and authorize the mayor to sign a letter of acceptance.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Thank you. Good evening, Larry, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The city requested that Ward Street Bridge be included in the city bridge candidate list and reviewed for possible funding under the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program. This is an annual Iowa DOT program and this year, Ward Street Bridge ranked high enough to receive funding. Upon the city of Atumwa's acceptance of offer of funding, a letter confirming the city's acceptance needs to be sent by February 2nd, 2018 with the complete attached to offer of city bridge funding form. The city will be responsible for 20% of the project cost with the balance from state funds. The cost for engineering and construction inspection can apply toward the match requirements of 20%. Staff recommends accepting the funding offer, authorizing the mayor to sign the attached letter of acceptance.
Any questions for Larry? Any comments?
I just have one quick question.
Go ahead, Victor.
Larry, what does it mean that Ward Street Bridge ranked high enough to receive funding? Does that mean something that's not that positive?
Well, in a sense. Higher your points, the worse condition your bridge actually is in. Under the normal program, and I, we started putting together a presentation, I wanted to kind of cover the bridge funding citywide. We just kind of ran out of time for this meeting, but I do plan to bring that back just as an informational item. Basically, a qualified engineer with bridge certification can inspect your bridge. Normally, they're biannually unless there's a special inspection required. That form that he fills out ranks multiple items from a structural standpoint. That is used by the DOT when they're reviewing into one of their forms that creates the point system. It's very odd because, for instance, the Market Street Bridge, I think, was on that list for like nine years before it scored high enough or the condition continued to deteriorate to where we received funding. The odd thing about that, you could be on it multiple years, but another bridge might come into the program that's even worse condition. So you can get bumped down, even though last year you was one point from scoring, you might be five the following year.
Great, thank you. Larry, so the city's money would be 20% of the total costs?
Correct. And we can use, there's some accounting that we have to go through to use our own engineering costs because we have started the design of this project some time ago. We won't be able to recapture that, but everything we've done from the time we're awarded forward, we can capture.
Other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Award the contract for the Beach Phase III RFP-1X Shade Structure Repair. Recommendation: Award the contract and authorize the mayor to sign.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Thank you. Go ahead, Gene.
This project is for the repair of 11 shade structures at the Beach Atumwa Facility. Bids were received and opened by the City of Atumwa on January 10th, 2018 at 2:00 PM. Three sets of plans were distributed and one bid was received. The low bidder is Krisner Contracting of Atumwa in the amount of $5,760.
Any questions for Gene?
I got a quick question. Go ahead. Gene, what are these shade structures going to look like? Can you give us like a brief description of what they might be like?
The way I understand it is they're just repairing the existing shade structures.
So these are just for repairs on what we have now?
Yes, there are, they're in groups of three or four on the east side and west side of the beach. So we're not building new shade structures, we're just repairing the existing shade structures.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Award the contract for the Beach Phase III RFP-2X LED Lighting Replacement. Recommendation: Award the contract and authorize the mayor to sign.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Thank you. Go ahead, Gene.
This project is for replacing the existing pool lighting with LED lighting at the Beach Atumwa Facility. Bids were received and opened by the City of Atumwa on January 10th, 2018 at 2:00 PM. Three sets of plans were distributed and three bids were received. The low bidder is Ridgeway Electric of Atumwa, Iowa, in the amount of $9,537.
Any questions for Gene?
Mr. Mayor? I just had one quick question. Gene, this is really a follow-up to the previous meeting. I believe it was you that mentioned this, or perhaps it was Dwight. When the repairs are undertaken for the LED lighting, you'll have to, in my understanding, you'll have to shut down the swim lane pool, quite frankly, for a given period of time. You have the swimmers that swim in the morning, but more importantly, will that also affect some of the, perhaps, tournaments that are occurring at that same time?
Well, we're going to try to time this so there's minimal disruption of the swimmers. We're going to paint the pools in March, too. So we're going to try to coordinate things all around. But the last time Ridgeway replaced the lights, they came in after hours, you know, when there was no one in the pool. So we might do it that way this time also.
That's fine. That was my only question, was there was talk about shutting the pool down and I'm not pining for that. I just wanted to be clear if it was, we need to notify the school district and other entities that may use it.
Very well. Any other questions?
I have a couple, Your Honor. Gene, the lights that are currently in there, are those LED as well or are they another type of lighting?
Well, we have two types of lighting above the indoor pool right now. We've got some of the old metal halide lights, mercury vapor lights that were basically the original fixtures. The bowls have been replaced, but some of the fixtures are original and those are going to be replaced by the LEDs. Ridgeway has already put a few LEDs in there to replace some of the old lights that had burned out. And it got to the point where there just wasn't enough lights, so we had to have them come in and install a few LEDs. And Dwight and I talked first and we knew that was the direction we wanted to go in. So Ridgeway is going to replace the rest of those old lights with LEDs.
Do you anticipate seeing any noticeable cost savings with moving to the LEDs?
Well, yeah, I don't know exactly how much, but the LEDs will definitely use less electricity. And, you know, based on the beach budget, we use $80,000 worth of electricity down there in one year. So this should help us.
Thank you.
Okay, any other good questions? Okay. All right, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Award the contract for the Beach Phase III RFP-5X Lagoon and Beach Landscaping. Recommendation: Award the contract and authorize the mayor to sign.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, Gene, go ahead.
This project is for lagoon and beach landscaping at the Beach Atumwa Facility. Bids were received and opened by the City of Atumwa on January 10th, 2018 at 2:00 PM. Four sets of plans were distributed and two bids were received. The low bidder is all-terrain seating of Atumwa in the amount of $12,771.
Okay, any questions for Gene? Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Resolution Number 12, 2018, approving change order number two and accepting the work as final and complete for the Beach Renovations Phase I Contract A Project. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution Number 12, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
We'll give that to Holly.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right. Go ahead, Gene.
The city council approved the contract in the amount of $288,565 to turn to concrete construction of Atumwa, Iowa through Resolution Number 202-2016 on August 16th, 2016 for Contract A Concrete Repairs for the Beach Renovations Phase I Project. This project addresses repairs to the catch and kiddie pools. Change order number one, increase the contract sum by $58,415 for the increase of quantity adjustments. Change order two, decreases the contract sum by $1,500 for eliminating work on the outer slide. The original contract amount, $288,565,000. Change order number one, $58,415. Change order number two, minus 1,500, new contract amount, $345,480. Less previous payments, $329,631. The final amount due is $15,849. And Phase I summary to date, revised contractual amount is now $722,430.
Okay, that's a correction in your packet, so you're all clear about that?
Mr. Mayor, just one question on that. Gene, when you look at the totality of it, again, the total cost is, what, $722,000, $723,000?
Yeah, $722,430, which is very close to what Dwight had predicted for this project.
The only question, and this is noted in the funding bond proceeds, we try and keep that amount at or about $700,000. I don't want to put anyone on the spot. Maybe you can be able to speak to this if that's all right, because we have that bonding proceeding. So is that an additional, say, $22,000, $23,000 that come out of fund balance or another fund or something?
That came out of the next session of bond proceeds and Dwight was advised of that.
Okay, all right, thank you. So I have, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, at this point, I'd like to hand off to city engineer Dwight Dolman for a brief presentation on the beach renovations.
Welcome, Dwight.
Like we've been doing on a lot of our projects, at the conclusion, we run a number of slides through to give the council an idea of what has really transpired. The action before you is the final action to conclude Phase I over at the beach. So we just want to take a few minutes and just kind of go through everything. There were four contracts. Contract A was the concrete repairs, B, slide repairs, C, parking lot renovations, D, building The slides that you see in front of you here, this is actually taken from on top of one of the slides. And in the far distance there is the kiddie pool. Then here's our wave pool. And then this down here where they're working is the catch pool. And we're, during the course of Phase I, we're replacing the worst of the worst concrete. Generally, everything that we're doing here is literally falling apart. And so down in this picture, you see where they've completely replaced the flat work and made some repairs inside the catch pool here. This next slide shows you a little bit more. All these orange or pink dots are my markings pointing out the areas that need to be replaced. This large area here is going to be replaced, plus these areas on the walls are going to be replaced. The next two slides there you see are the repair areas after all the bad concrete has been removed. And then down here in the lower corner, this is the catch pool after the repairs have been made, the new concrete floor and the wall repairs. Over on the kiddie pool, up above where you had that water bubbler is where this area is at. And before any of the work began, this is what it looked like after they chiseled away all the bad concrete. This is that area there. And then they replaced it with all the concrete here. Actually, it's shot concrete that we're using to make these repairs. And then after the waterproofing is put on, you have the finished product here. So you got a good before and after series here. And here's an area over in the kiddie pool. You can see my pink marks over in here, kind of delineating the different repairs. So back here, on the next slide, you can see where all the bad concrete has been removed. And then down here, concrete's been replaced. And here, it's received new waterproofing. Now, this area down here that you see, this is a repair that was done about 10 years ago and it's holding it up. It's holding up just perfectly. But the contract didn't include getting the waterproofing on it, so it kind of looked off color. When we open up in the spring, everything will have a fresh coat of this waterproofing, so everything will be uniform in color, including that area. Contract B is the slide repairs. There were some structural deficiencies and fiberglass repairs that needed to be made on all the slides. On this part, the concrete slab underneath it was removed and replaced. This is the indoor/outdoor slide. You can see the before and after of the repairs. Everything was completely sandblasted and repainted. And then here's another picture of the outdoor slides before, during, and after the work that was completed. Now, this is a picture of the slide tower before. And you can kind of make out here, you know, here's some rusted steel there and there was rust prevalent throughout the entire structure. And here is one of the stair treads and that is wearing away. So all the stair treads have been repaired. The entire stair tower has been sandblasted and repainted. We had, we did make some structural repairs, so it was a little more involved than what we had thought, but it's, the work is complete at this point. The parking lot renovations, there were a number of cracks that we milled out and replaced. Cracks were also routed out and sealed. And then you can see in this picture here, the application of the fog seal. And then down here is the completed project with the fog seal and the striping for the parking spaces. Contract D was probably another contract that was pretty well involved. Here you see the before picture of the raft rental up above here. And then after we've completed with it, this is it down here below. Gave them more counter space and more storage space underneath the cabinet. Now, on the inside of the lobby, you remember these old roll-up doors? Well, in the winter, on a day like today, that was pretty chilly in those areas. So we went in there and we replaced them with these aluminum-framed doors and windows. And it adds more light to the lobby area. It sealed out all those cold drafts and it's really made it a nice amenity to the lobby And also, part of that contract was the new flooring. The old carpet was taken up. The ceramic tile was prepped in anticipation of the application of this epoxy flooring material. And what we have at this point is a flooring system that's non-slip when it's wet, and that was a problem with the ceramic tile. And in like manner in the lobby, all the ceiling tile that we had there were of the wrong material for this type of a moisture-laden environment. So all the ceiling tile were warped and curled. The new ceiling tile that got replaced, you won't have a problem with that. The ceiling tile will last the remaining life of this facility. And we also replaced all these lights, too. They were four-foot fluorescent tubes, they're all LED now. And then back in the indoor pool area, all these insulated glass units were, the seals were leaking. Half the windows had condensation forming, so you couldn't even see out. So these have all been replaced and we have a 10-year warranty on them now. One of the projects that I think was probably most challenging and doesn't get enough credit is this stair tower here in the indoor/outdoor pool. This is what it looked like beforehand. And Gene can probably tell you how many kids ended up with metal slivers in their feet because of this stairway. But that was completely removed and we replaced it with one that's made out of stainless steel and fiberglass, so we don't have to ever worry about a kid getting hurt on this thing again. And just to close things out, here are the dollar amounts of the different contracts, which brought us a total of a little over $700,000. And to rephrase what was discussed earlier, that 722 being over the target amount of $700,000. You'll see in Agenda Item later on this evening that Phase II numbers are just a little bit below the $700,000. So if you take a look at both those two numbers, you'll see that we're still pretty well on track for that $700,000 a year. So we're right at 1.4 million for the two phases.
Good.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Any questions for Dwight? Good overview, thank you for the pictures. I think that helps to see those improvements. Ready to vote?
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Resolution Number 13, 2018, approving change order number one and accepting the work as final and complete for the Fox Sock Road Reconstruction Project. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution Number 13, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Larry.
This project consisted of reconstructing approximately 800 linear feet of Fox Sock Road from about 150-foot east of Oak Metal Drive to Pawnee Drive, including the Pawnee Drive intersection. The reconstruction included removal of 12 inches of subgrade treatment with fly ash, 6 inches of modified subgrade, and 9 inches of new PCC pavement. Ancillary work included the survey of drains, driveways, erosion control, and seating. The project was awarded July 11th of 2017 in the amount of $277,803.25 to KNA Escavating of Weaver, Iowa. And they've completed the above referenced work according to the plans and specifications. This will approve change order one and authorize payment and release of all retainages. Change order one increases the contract sum by $20,783 for increased quantity adjustments, making the new contract amount $297,811.8.
Any questions for Larry? Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Resolution Number 14, 2018, approving change order number one and accepting the work as final and complete for the Osage Drive Reconstruction Project. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution Number 14, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, Larry, go ahead.
This project, very similar to the last one, consisted of reconstructing approximately 1,000-foot of Osage Drive between Oak Metal Drive and Pawnee Drive. The reconstruction included removal, 12 inches of subgrade treatment with fly ash, 6 inches of modified subbase, and 8 inches of PC pavement. The project was awarded July 11th of 2017 in the amount of $305,957. Again, KNA Escavating Weaver, Iowa. And they have completed the above referenced work according to the plans and specifications. And this will approve change order one and authorize payment and release of retainages. Change order one increases the contract amount by $5,703.46, again, for increase of quantity adjustments. New contract amount is $311,660.46.
Any questions for Larry? Larry, you might just add a comment about 8 inches versus 9 inches of Portland Larry, you might just add a comment about 8 inches versus 9 inches of Portland cement. What's the difference?
Based on traffic count and projected truck count.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Resolution Number 15, 2018, approving change order number one for the Airport Fuel Farm Project. Recommendation, pass and adopt Resolution Number 15, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Hallie.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Chris Cobbler, we haven't introduced you before. So Chris Cobbler, Maintenance Supervisor at the airport, do you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Otomo Regional Airport has been installing a new airplane fueling system that is funded 85% through the IDOT grant. When the system was ordered, it was set up for self-service only and would not work with the truck fueling system that is currently utilized by our FBO. Changes had to be made to allow the fueling for the FBO fuel trucks and still have self-service capabilities. The original cost of the contract was in the sum of $375,200. The change order increased the contract cost by $17,523 for a total contract cost of $392,723. The city's share of the project will be paid from the airport fund. And this change order has been reviewed and approved by the Airport Advisory Board.
Any questions for Chris? I think your airport committee did a nice job of discussing it the other day. Ready to vote?
Take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Resolution Number 16, 2018, authorizing Mayor to execute two easement agreements for construction and maintenance of public improvements for the 2018 RFP-2 Monteg Lane culvert project. Recommendation, pass and adopt Resolution Number 16, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented. Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Larry.
The existing corrugated metal pipe culvert is severely corroded and partially collapsed. This project will replace it with a 54-inch reinforced concrete pipe culvert. It'll also require easements for the construction and maintenance of the culvert. We're asking for approval of easements, which the property owners have reviewed and agreed to sign.
Any questions for Larry? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Resolution Number 18, 2018, awarding the contract for the parking ramp repairs project. Recommendation, pass and adopt Resolution Number 18, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, go ahead, Larry.
This project consists of vertical and horizontal concrete repairs, including epoxy injection, routing, and sealing of cracks, cementation sparrow repair, precast flange clip repairs, resealing precast cock joints, and waterproofing repairs. Three alternate bids were requested, including additional repairs for the precast deck and repairs to the exterior of the parking ramp. Bids were received and opened by the city on January 10th, 2018. Nine sets were distributed and seven bids were received. Staff recommends the contract be awarded in the amount of the base bid of $116,120. Alternate bid number two for add to the base for $6,000, and alternate bid item three, add to the base bid $10,420 for a total award amount of $132,540. Our original estimate was $143,000. Plan holder's list is attached.
Any questions for Larry?
I've got a quick question.
Go ahead, Matt.
Larry, when we had a review of the condition of the parking ramp, there were some slabs there that had sank and settled. And we talked about, you know, use for life of the parking ramp, what it would cost to repair those over time. And if we do these kind of repairs, this doesn't address that issue. That's more of a larger scope.
Well, the actual settlement in the corner, the way we discussed it last time, is the slab on grade. That's where we actually put a select fill right on top of the existing basement fill. I did go back after that last meeting and presentation and look, and that was a bid item for approximately $32,000 that was removed from the contract. I guess at the time, they thought they would just see how much settlement would occur over time. Now we're in replacing that particular part. That really has nothing to do with some of the precast problems, but it does have a problem with the settlement.
Right. So we'll probably be getting another, you know, we'll be getting some more of these maintenance items coming up that are going to be substantially expensive, it sounds like.
It's possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Ready to vote? Take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Resolution Number 19, 2018, approving change order number one for the beach renovations Phase Two, Contract A, concrete repairs. Recommendation, pass and adopt Resolution Number 19, 2018.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Hallie.
Thank you. Okay, Gene, go ahead.
The City Council approved the contract in the amount of $360,315 to turn to concrete construction of Otomo through Resolution Number 159-2017 on July 18th, 2017 for Contract A, concrete repairs for Beach Renovations Phase Two project. Change Order Number One consists of finalizing quantities for horizontal and vertical concrete repairs and adding select sidewalk and storm sewer repairs, resulting in a decrease to the contract amount The revised contract amount is now $356,818.1. Phase Two revised contract amounts $670,828.26.
So that's the amount that came in under the 700 that Dwight was talking about?
Correct.
Thank you. Any questions for Gene? Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Resolution Number 20, 2018, approving professional services agreement between the City of Otomo and Michael's Energy to conduct a heating and air conditioning feasibility study. Recommendation, pass and adopt Resolution Number 20, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dwight.
City Hall's heating system has limited service life remaining. Additionally, staff has presented environmental concerns regarding comfort levels during the heating and cooling Michael's Energy performed an energy audit in the summer of 2016. The condition of the City Hall boiler and all the air conditioning units around the building was mentioned as a concern at that time. Michael's Energy has proposed to perform a feasibility study to consider various heating and cooling systems, from simple replacement of the boiler to complete installation of a geothermal system in the amount of $12,400. In conjunction with an Alliant Energy efficiency program, Alliant will reimburse the city 50% of the cost for the feasibility study at the conclusion of the study. Upon implementation and completion of any of the energy efficiency options within 18 months of completion of the study, Alliant will reimburse the city the remaining 50% of the cost of the study.
Good deal. Any questions for Dwight? Sounds like a pretty good deal. Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Okay, we're to the point where if there's anyone in the audience that wants to address an item of any city issue, now's the time to come and speak to the council. Okay, seeing none, then let's move to some public comments. Andy, do you want to say anything about our first finance meeting? Just a general?
The Finance Committee had our first meeting this past Thursday, I believe it was. And the purpose of that, of the Finance Committee is, quite frankly, to inform the public, certainly the members of that committee, on what some of the challenges and opportunities are for the city financially. We've spent most of our time talking about the General Fund. A number of questions were generated, of course. The other item I would mention, the plan is to have Stage Three meetings a year. We would have, our first meeting of the year would be very, very similar to what we had planned this time, and that is to have one in early January. That is as the new budget is beginning to be formed and taking shape. Another meeting would be the probably June timeframe. And at that point, we're beginning to end the current fiscal year and then migrate into the new fiscal year. And then finally, the third meeting would be near the end of the year, again, as we're prepping for the upcoming fiscal year. And by that point, as you well know, the Finance Director Bob Jay is already staging the meetings with the department heads, the justification meetings, I would call them. They have no administrative authority. Simply, they offer advice and consent, but they do not set policy for the city. But I thought it was a good meeting insofar as we had some input from the private sector and noted some of our challenges. Mayor, I don't know if you or Councilmen Rowe or Dalby have any additional observations.
Mark or Matt, either one?
I would just add to what Mr. Moore said. I thought it was a productive meeting. And I think that it's going to be a good thing for the community going forward. It'll, at least from a council perspective, I think that it'll help give us just a little bit more depth and understanding of the finances and give us a chance to go into a lot more detail as to what we're experiencing as a city when we move into the challenging times that we have ahead.
Okay. Okay. Well, following up in that vein for just a moment, our Finance Director Bob Jay sent out a note today. And if you haven't seen it, I'd encourage you to watch the seven-minute video produced by the State Auditor's Office. It talks about what our responsibility as a council is as far as managing our finances. And I want to make a comment, because Bob and I did have this conversation. It may be more appropriate for smaller cities that don't have a full-fledged finance department, where the city clerk is ultimately the city clerk and finance director. But I think there is some good useful information, and I encourage you just to look at it and see if it'll help you to understand, again, the challenges that we have somebody looking over our shoulder to, the State Auditor. Another comment I would like to share with you, I did represent the city yesterday in the Martin Luther King Citywide Celebration. And I would like to personally give thanks to Sandra and Jeff Hindred. They, as a couple, have basically, single-handed, put together for a number of years, the Martin Luther King Celebration. And I thought yesterday's, starting at 7:15 at the mall, was, for those of you who were out that early, it was snowy and blowy and cold. But they had a nice turnout at the mall. And then last night, the conclusion at the St. Mary's Church, where they had a chorus from Chicago. And I think in the spirit of Martin Luther King, peace, justice, and love were the three themes that I picked up. And the whole program was titled Building Bridges. And I think we're in a good position. I compliment former Mayor Dale Euling, who set up a diversity committee years ago. And so we've been talking and working as a community to be open and accepting of people of many different faiths and ethnic background. And so we have been building bridges. But it was a very well-done program, and I just think Jeff and Sandra should get some recognition for their work on that. And lastly, I'd make a comment, and I'd invite Chris Cobbler to join me if there's anything he wants to add. You know, we've been, I went to the airport committee meeting this week, and we had a very good discussion, I thought. We had approached the city about doing an air show in '18. And I want to say that the air show in this past August was outstanding. And we wanted to do another show, but there are a couple of issues. One is the uncertainty of when our runway will actually be under construction. That's one issue. Two, I think the committee and people that worked on it felt that there might be some finance fatigue. We raised $165,000 last year to do the show. And the lowest amount we could project for this year would be $145,000. And after much discussion with our co-chairs of that committee and also with the airport advisory, we recommended that we not do a show this year. Today, around noon time, I was approached by a group, and they want to go ahead with the air show and form an LLC and do it independent of the city. And as far as I'm concerned, if they can raise that kind of money, that's their prerogative. But I told them very clearly that with the budget that we're faced with the city, that we were not making any financial contribution this year. So I just wanted to be upfront with the council and let you know where those conversations are at. Apparently, they do have the wherewithal to get started. And if they can show us that they have the funds and the responsibility and the legal organization to do it, I would encourage you to work with them. But we're going to have to see that stuff in hard, fast writing, and I want you all to be a part of that. So any questions about that? Because that was not on the agenda, but I just feel in good faith that came up at noon today. And like I said, we had encouraged the council to consider that and to pass. So I felt like we've changed positions, and you need to be aware of that. Okay. Any other comments for the good of the cause of the organization? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Okay, 5:00.
6:35.[1775.88]